Hello, I'm Mark Els, Barnstable Town Manager, and this is my Town Manager Update for May 1st through May 14th. We're proceeding with the Budget Action Calendar for FY 2025. The operating budget for FY 2025 has been submitted to the Town Council, and public hearings are scheduled to begin on June 6th. Mark Milne, Director of Finance, will provide a summary of the FY 2025 operating budget at the upcoming Town Council meeting when they read in the operating budget appropriation orders. And for more information on our fiscal year budgets, please view the town's open budget website. As previously reported, and in response to requests by our Town Council and the public regarding monitoring activities of the Vineyard Wind cable landing at Koval's Beach, the town continues discussions with Vineyard Wind regarding regular communications with the town on safe and compliant operation of this system. My staff has had several meetings and reviews proposed signage for the site. The goal remains a Vineyard Wind installation of signage prior to summer season. Vineyard Wind is doing onsite testing to verify safety and compliance. It's my understanding that Mass Department of Public Health will be involved relevant to safety information. The Town of Barnstable has retained a third-party independent expert to verify readings and data if and when needed, and will keep you informed of our progress on this matter. The Energy Facility Siting Board opened the evidentiary hearing on Monday, May 13, 2024, regarding the Mid-Cap Reliability Project change. The hearing was held by Zoom. The public could watch separately via Zoom, but they could not participate and did not appear within the hearing. The standard order of the hearing involved the FSB, including the Department of Public Utilities staff, getting to ask questions of Eversource, including their consultants and attorneys. The FSB took up the entire day. When the FSB eventually finishes, the town, through its legal department and other interveners, are allowed to ask questions. The second day of hearings are scheduled this Wednesday, May 15th, at 10:00 a.m. The Town of Barnstable recently secured a permit through the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. This permit will allow for limited beach raking at Douses and Calmas Beaches, in addition to the other beach activities such as events. To protect nesting endangered shorebirds, the permit places several constraints on the raking. Specifically, raking is prohibited in May and June, and can occur twice a month in July and August. However, there is the opportunity to remove excess seaweed or rack for human health and safety reasons with no time-of-year restrictions. The permit was required under the Endangered Species Act and will be valid for five years. Last year, the town secured a similar permit for Craigville and Koval's Beaches. The Barnstable Youth Commission is hosting its 10th Annual Youth Summit for Barnstable's intermediate school students on Thursday, May 23rd. The event features speakers Kevin Rosario of Addiction Consulting and Educational Services, and Robert Hackinson of Dynamic Influence. The speakers will help educate students about making good choices as they enter high school and educate them about the impacts, effects of drugs and alcohol. The summit will also feature Barnstable High School students mentoring BIS students on what's expected as they transition to high school. A vendor fair will take place at BIS for students to pass through and gather information from various student clubs and organizations. Thank you, Youth Commission. The Recreation Division has processed over 13,000 2024 resident parking permits to date. We estimate an additional 8,000 applications will be received prior to the start of the season and encourage all residents to apply as soon as they can to avoid delays. Beach parking permit applications can be filled out online, mailed in, or dropped off at the Youth and Community Center. If you need assistance, please contact the parking permit hotline at 508-790-6345, extension 145. Town of Barnstable staff will begin verifying permits on beaches starting Saturday, May 25th. Don't forget. Beginning Saturday, June 22nd, Town of Barnstable's beaches, ponds, and lakes will be open seven days a week through Labor Day. All beaches will be open daily from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. The ongoing nationwide lifeguard shortage is affecting us again this summer. This will impact our ability to have lifeguard coverage at all 13 locations. Currently, we anticipate having full staff, including lifeguards, at Craigville Beach, Douses Beach, Koval's Beach, Calmas Beach, and Veterans Beach. We are hopeful to potentially provide lifeguard staffing at additional locations. To assist the public with their summer plans, we will continue to communicate our staffing operations as we approach June 22nd, so the public is aware which sites have lifeguard coverage. We encourage the public to download the My Barnstable app to help them stay informed. Ensuring public safety is our top priority. The Recreation Division is working to provide lifeguard staff at as many sites as possible. However, we advise the public that due to limited staffing, some sites may not have lifeguard coverage, and swimmers will do so at their own risk. The town is hosting a second public meeting to present preliminary concepts for additional use of land around the Barnstable Adult Community Center, formerly the Senior Center. This meeting is a follow-up to the February 1st listening session where ideas for recreation and housing were discussed. Please join us on Wednesday, May 22nd, at 1:00 p.m. at the Barnstable Adult Community Center for a presentation of concepts along with refreshments and continued discussion about the potential for the site. For more information, you can visit the BACC Master Plan Project website, which can be accessed from the Planning and Development Department's homepage. And for any questions, please call our Planning and Development Department. The Town of Barnstable will host a public workshop for the Marston's Mills former school site master plan on Wednesday, May 29th, at 6:00 p.m., Liberty Hall, Main Street, Marston's Mills. The intent of the public workshop is to continue to gather community input as to the future redevelopment of the site. This is the third public listening session hosted by the Planning and Development Department. The Town of Barnstable is seeking to create a master site development plan for the 14-acre parcel formerly the site of the Marston's Mills Elementary School, and public input is critical to successfully establish site-specific land use goals which will inform this master plan. All residents are welcome to attend. And for any questions regarding the meeting or this project, please contact James Cupford, the Assistant Director of Planning and Development, Mass DOT will host a hybrid design public hearing and be held to present the design for the proposed park-and-ride expansion and improvements at the Route 132 Park-and-Ride Project in Barnstable. It'll be held virtual on Tuesday, May 28th, at 6:00 p.m. and in-person Wednesday, May 29th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Barnstable County Complex Mary Platt Flynn Conference Room. That's on Main Street, Route 6A, Barnstable Village. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with the opportunity to become fully acquainted with the proposed park-and-ride expansion and improvements at the Route 132 Park-and-Ride Project. All views and comments, subject to, I'm sorry, submitted in the response to the hearing will be reviewed and considered to the maximum extent possible. The Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce has requested that the Town of Barnstable's Town Manager serve as a member of the newly-formed Cape and Islands Bridge Coalition. The first meeting of the Bridge Coalition was held on Tuesday, May 7th, at 11:30 at the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. Cape and Islands Bridge Coalition is a regional group of businesses from Greater Cape Cod, the islands of Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard, and southeastern New England advocating for the full funding and replacement of the Sagamore and Bourne Bridges. As efforts to replace the bridges move forward, the Coalition is unified in its mission to safeguard the economic viability of the region and preserve the needs of the Cape and Islands community for generations to come. And we'll keep you advised of the efforts of this specific coalition, but I will encourage everybody to be looking for other community-based opportunities to be advised of this. I'll share whatever information as Town Manager that I gather, but this particular coalition is very much focused on business impacts, so let's make sure we take advantage of every community, every community-based sort of impact where we can have input, because these are significant projects. We'll keep you advised. That concludes my Town Manager's update. And at this time, I'll ask Kelly Colapi, Communications Manager for the Public Works Department, to provide an update on water resource management planning, including the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. And then Kelly will be followed by Chris Canelo, Director of Community Services, who will provide an update on the Centerville Playground Project. Thank you.
Hello, Kelly Colapi with the Department of Public Works, and I will be walking you through our Water Resources Management update. To begin, we'll take a look at the Strawberry Hill Road Sewer Expansion Project. So as previously reported, we continue to work through our project punch list and closeout. First connections for a portion of this project are anticipated to begin this season. As previously reported, there are four different communications that eligible property owners will receive. The first is a project completion letter, which is distributed by the Department of Public Works. This letter essentially provides property owners with an overview of future communications and which departments those communications will be coming from. We have successfully sent that letter out as of last week, and we've been beginning to get a few calls from eager residents that we are working through as we speak. Next will come an estimated, I'm sorry, assessment generated from the Town Treasurer Collector's Office, as well as the sewer connection notification, which will be generated and sent by the Barnstable Health Division. And that will be followed by the final sewer assessment, which will again be distributed by the Treasurer's Office. So again, our project completion letter from the Department of Public Works outlines these four different pieces of communication, as well as provides contact information for the various town departments and divisions that property owners can reach out to should they have any questions regarding the connection policy or their sewer assessment. Now with that, as part of our project closeout letter, DPW also sent a one-page sewer connection process document, which you will see on the left-hand portion of your screen. This document will also be sent along with the Health Division's sewer connection notification, and is really just a very abridged version of our full sewer connection handbook and guide. This really walks property owners through the key eight steps for connecting to municipal sewer, including that first integral step, which is receiving your official notice of sewer connection from the Barnstable Health Division. Now with that, our full guide, our Homeowner's Sewer Connection Guide, is in final layout and review. It will be available for download via barnstablewaterresources.com, and we will also have printed hard copies available at Town Hall as well as other identified town locations. To complement that effort, we have an upcoming Sewer Connection Workshop being hosted on Tuesday, June 4th, at 1:30 p.m. at the Barnstable Adult Community Center. This is a continuation of our sewer expansion programming that we have been hosting in collaboration with the BACC. Registration is encouraged, and there's a link to register on the Adult Community Center website. And why we are encouraging registration specifically for this workshop is because attendees will be presented with a hard copy of the Homeowner's Sewer Connection Handbook. We'll be walking you through the entirety of the handbook, as well as introducing our new Sewer Program Connection Manager, Ansley DeMullier. We do intend to expand this Connection Workshop to other venues and times throughout the summer, so that we can make the most of having all of our second homeowners back on the Cape for the summer season. And then to complement that effort as well, we are working with the Barnstable Government Access Channel to develop another waterworks video. The next video in the series will be dedicated to the sewer connection process, and it will follow a similar format to previous videos that we have completed with the Government Access Channel, where I interview our Sewer Program Connection Manager, Ansley, and really, again, provide a very visual and conversational look at the sewer connection process. Next, we'll shift over to Route 28 East, which is the second project that we have successfully completed sewer construction for as part of our Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. As previously reported, we had worked on some drainage improvements on Finney's Lane. Those have since been completed, and we have moved into a settling period for the roadway. Final line striping on Route 28 was completed this week on Monday, May 13th. We've got some additional work on the intersection specifically at Strawberry Hill Road, and that will wrap up our paving restoration on Route 28. We are also in the process of coordinating schedules for final paving of West Main Street and the disturbed portion of Finney's Lane, which was part of this Route 28 East project. And, as previously reported, developing our project punch list so that we can work through contract closeout. Sewer connections for Route 28 East and the other portion of Strawberry Hill Road, so as I mentioned previously, there's a portion of properties in Strawberry Hill Road that will be part of our first connections, and then there's another portion of properties as part of the Strawberry Hill Road project that will be part of connections with Route 28 East. That's mainly a result of needing that Finney's Lane pump station to be fully operational. We're expecting that wave of connections will be available by the end of this calendar year, so we're making great progress on working towards making municipal sewer available to properties in town. And with that, the Finney's Lane pump station, the driveway has been completed, the paving, and site restoration is in progress. We are still working through some final utility services and anticipate that project, that pump station at Finney's Lane and Route 28, will be completed by the end of June. Centerville Village Sewer Expansion. So as we've discussed in recent updates, the north phase design has been completed, and our construction bid was advertised on April 3rd. We plan to open bids on May 15th, in which we will look through everyone who has applied, review references, and report back on our recommended contractor. The Mother's Park pump station and surrounding properties are listed as a bid alternate, and as we've previously discussed, this is really pending our approval of the Article 97 legislation, and it allowed us to have increased flexibility with awarding this bid so that we can continue with progress and ultimately get the maximum funding and construction that we need. Property owner outreach communications will follow the bid award, and we are expecting that to happen early summer. That will include notification letters to all property owners as well as beginning our series of public outreach meetings. And then we do anticipate construction for this northern phase to begin in the fall of 2024. The south phase, which you can see that second graphic or the second map on sort of the middle of your screen there, which includes Main Street, Centerville, we continue to work through an advanced design of that project, and are also continuing our efforts to cite pump station locations and associated easement options. We'll also take a brief look at the 720 Main Street Pump Station Replacement Project. So as a reminder, this is part of the Town Sewer Pump Station Rehabilitation Program, and specifically, this project addresses capacity concerns within the town's growth incentive zone, as well as replaces the aging pump station infrastructure, which is located across the street. So 720 is where that original infrastructure is, and 725 Main Street is the location of the new sewer pump station. So speaking of that sewer pump station, onsite excavation continues. The work hours for onsite continue to be 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, weather pending. And we've made great success on the foundation. So the foundation has been poured to grade as of this update, and we are working through our water testing, which will be followed by weatherproofing of the foundation. This onsite work, again, contained to the 725 Main Street parcel, will continue through the summer season. However, our in-road sewer construction is wrapping up for the season. We are currently in the testing and temporary restoration progress, so all open excavation has ceased for the season. Our in-road work hours for the remainder of this week will be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The official road closure has been lifted, and all restoration and testing is currently being done with single-lane alternating traffic. We intend to have the contractor demobilize from the roadway completely no later than May 23rd, ahead of Memorial Day weekend, and then our in-road sewer construction will resume this fall. Looking at the Water Pollution Control Facility, our solids processing facility upgrades project continues to work through its project closeout punch list, and we do anticipate that project to be fully completed by the end of this month. Our nitrogen removal and headworks improvements project, again, number-one-ranked project on the 2024 Draft Clean Water Fund Intended Use Plan. We are very grateful and thankful to the Town Council for their appropriation and loan order, which will fund the Water Pollution Control Facility project upgrades and our nitrogen improvements project. We do have a basis of design report that's under review, and we will continue to move forward and advance into final design. We have also recommended Violia Zeeweed, their MBR, their membrane bioreactor, as the manufacturer for a portion of that project, and we do anticipate construction to begin in the fall of 2025. As a reminder, we have a video series that we shared with Town Council and the public that overviews a walkthrough of the current treatment facility and the improvements we hope to make with this project, or we will be making with this project, as well as a roundtable discussion where we speak about the, really, the nitrogen portion of this project and how we are tackling advancements in wastewater treatment to bring the next generation of treatment to Barnstable. So we are very excited to move forward with this project, and again, very grateful for Town Council for their appropriation and support. Our Effluent Disposal Evaluation continues with our contractor, CDM Smith. We continue to evaluate disposal alternatives, and we continue to have our, host our monthly meetings with Mass DEP as we work through that progress. And we'll continue, as there are updates, to share that with Town Council and our community. And we have been asked for an update on the watershed permit. So in, just to complement what DPW Director Dan Santos shared with Town Council at the last meeting, Barnstable submitted its watershed permit application on September 1st of 2023, so almost a year ago now. We were the first on Cape Cod to submit, and the only, as of right now, to submit a watershed permit application. And the application continues to be under review with Mass DEP. DEP did recently release a table, which is available on their website, that shows the status of the other Cape towns and other towns in the region based off of where they are in this process. And as I mentioned, Barnstable is the first and the only to currently have applied for the full watershed permit. Most other towns are in that notice of intent stage. So we are proud of our efforts and await feedback from DEP. Lastly, we'll look at water quality updates. We have quite a few projects and some exciting announcements to share. The first being our municipal separate storm sewer system, or our MS4 permit updates. We do have a public hearing scheduled for Wednesday, May 28th, at 3:00 p.m., and this will be held virtually via Zoom. The meeting link and information is available on the Barnstable Town website on the town calendar. And we also have draft stormwater management rules and regulations available on the town website under the Department of Public Works page. We will be sharing public notice information through a press release shortly. But as of right now, all public comments can be emailed to amberunra@amber.unra@townofbarnstablema.us. And the deadline to submit comments prior to the meeting will be May 28th at 12:00 p.m. So this hearing really is the next step in adopting our stormwater management policies and procedures in moving forward with a application process. So previously, Town Council did approve the ability to adapt this ordinance and make it part of our town e-code, and now we're moving forward with the next step, which is the actual DPW adoption. So this public hearing is really a chance for the community to come in and share their thoughts on the proposed stormwater management plan, the rules and the regulations. Additionally, a great success story coming out of Long Pond, Marston's Mills, where our floating treatment wetland deployment was successfully completed earlier this month, May 6th and 7th. You'll see some photos on the right-hand portion of your screen that show, you know, quite a bit of folks that were out there helping to put together these floating treatment wetlands and then actually deploy them into the pond. Monitoring of the floating treatment wetlands will take place through the spring and summer and next spring and summer. Those, that monitoring will really consist of taking water quality samples as well as samples of the biomass on the treatment, on the floating wetland treatments themselves, and that will be used to measure our total phosphorus and nitrogen removal. So we're really thrilled that this project has officially taken off and that deployment is completed, and we look forward to the monitoring and the results to come. Additionally, another kudos, this time to the UMass Dartmouth Senior Engineering Team, the engineering project, which took a look at Shubal Pond. This team was sponsored by Barnstable's Department of Public Works and was based off of the recommendations presented in the Shubal Pond Management Plan. DPW staff mentored a team of engineering students from UMass Dartmouth to help prepare sewer and stormwater designs to reduce nutrient inputs into Shubal Pond. The students took second place in their final presentation, and you can see them with their DPW mentors on the right-hand portion of your screen. So again, congrats to UMass Dartmouth and to the DPW engineers who assisted and mentored them throughout this process. And then we'll wrap up with our water quality monitoring. Cyanobacteria monitoring will begin for the season on Monday, May 20th. Water quality updates, I just want to remind you, will be posted on the barnstablewaterresources.com website. We have a page dedicated to water quality monitoring, which also shares a bit about our partnership with the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, the APCC, and also includes a link, as we have here in this presentation, to the APCC's interactive cyanobacteria monitoring map. We'll also continue to post water quality monitoring updates, including any potential closures of any of our water resources, our waterways, through the town social media and the My Barnstable app. And then a call for water quality monitoring volunteers. Each year, we look for our citizen scientists to come help with estuary samples, specifically in Barnstable Harbor, Lewis Bay, Centerville River, Halls Creek, and Three Bays. If you are interested in participating in our water quality monitoring for the season, please email brookwithers@brook.withers@town.barnstablema.us for more information, or simply give the Department of Public Works a phone call. That concludes our Water Resources update. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Chris Canelo, Town of Barnstable, Director of Community Services. I'm here to provide a brief history and an update on the status of the Centerville Playground Project and surrounding site work. The playground was closed in early February due to numerous hazardous conditions. The town issued a press release on February 2nd and placed information on our social media outlets and numerous communications, and was also discussed in the article in the Cape Cod Times. Since that time, I have answered many inquiries about the status and the expected timeline for reopening of the playground. I appreciate everyone's patience as we continue to navigate the Playground Project and other improvements to the site. The Centerville Playground Advisory Group currently consists of Rich Anderson, a Centerville resident and COMM paramedic, John Gleason, Director of Recreation, myself, Patty Machado, former Recreation Director and advocate for all things related to our youth, Mark Maranaccio, the town architect, Jody, I'm sorry, Judy Reel, our Playground Consultant, Molly Sproul, a Playground butter and devoted resident of Centerville, Richard Ventrone, the lead architect from the Department of Public Works, and Craig Tamish, Town Council Vice President, who attended the last public informational session and has been included in recent discussions within the advisory group. Also like to recognize former advisory group members, Councilor Atsalas Precinct 4, former Director of Community Services Madeline Noonan, James Tenalia, former Recreation Commission Member and Liaison to CPC, and Nancy White, who was the original Playground Consultant, who has since deceased. Public meetings were held on January 31st, 2023, and November 11th of 2023. Some of the hazardous conditions that led to the closure were failed retaining walls located adjacent to the front parking lot and other retaining walls, landings, and steps with rotten timbers and rusted hardware. Numerous pieces of failed elements of wooden play structure and compromised structural support led to the closure. support led to the closure, along with broken playground equipment and insufficient playground surfacing material, or wood fibers, as it's called. Given the existing site conditions previously mentioned, and having no accessible egress to the playground, we ultimately made the decision to permanently close the playground until construction is complete. The town researched the possibility of replacing some of the failed equipment and installing a Gaga ball pit, but ultimately, this proved to be extremely costly, and we would still not have the appropriate access to utilize the space, and would not resolve other safety concerns that we had. Sorry? Currently, the town is working... This slide depicts the existing site plan. This is a challenging site, to say the least, and many obstacles to overcome. There is not adequate parking for the numerous users, and more importantly, in order to be ADA accessible as required, we needed to lower the elevation of the parking lot and additionally raise the grade of the existing playground. Additionally, as many of you who visit the site know, accessibility from Main Street by the Arbor is a treacherous walk through exposed routes, and this will be resolved in the new plan. This site also includes a small baseball field with 50-foot base paths and is in need of renovation. Currently, the town is working on construction documents and drawings. These are being completed in-house by town architect Mark Maranaccio, with assistance from lead architect Richard Ventrone. The overall site improvements consist of three projects: playground and accessible playground, retaining wall construction, and the ball field renovations, which is pending Community Preservation Act approval. The Department of Public Works, through the Highway Division and Structures and Grounds, will begin to remove deteriorated equipment, failed retaining walls, and prepare the site for construction. David Anthony, Director of Asset Management, will be removing memorial plaques and notifying families of the closure, and will provide them with potential future opportunities that may exist. Once the site is clear, we may utilize the clean fill from other ongoing projects throughout the town if feasible. We will also be installing safety construction fencing as needed, and installing a sign to inform uninformed visitors of the closure and pending construction timeline. Construction of the retaining wall playground and parking lot are anticipated to begin in the fall of 2024, with estimated completion in 2025. Now to the proposed site plan. The plan includes a revised lowered parking area, rear parking area, with the addition of 10 parking spaces. Playground area filled to raise the elevation of the area, which is approximately being raised two to three feet. New accessible path to the playground, replaced retaining wall, and when enough approved, an updated ball field with a grass infield and a shortened outfield. This has been Mark's work on the proposed site as it stands now, showing the new ball field, and it shows it's kind of overlaid with the old plan. And the new plan includes swings, we-go-round, treehouse, play structures, crab trap, seesaw, surfboard, shipwreck, sea lion, and we also included shade with seating areas underneath, pour-in-place, and artificial turf. We're trying to reduce the maintenance of that site, and also a water bill face, water fill station, which we've kind of done with all of our projects moving forward. Just some of the playground equipment that we have included, you know, we have infant swings, we have normal swings, it's kind of a staple of all playgrounds, we-go-round, treehouse, play structure, ship, crab trap, seesaw, and surfboard. Additionally, there is a sea lion and a shipwreck as an alternate if cost allows. So this slide represents the overall view of the new proposed playground. Notice the pour-in-place, the colors are different, the light blue and the dark blue, it's kind of switched up, this was just a first drawing. It depicts the level of the depth of the ocean. And after community feedback, there was some concerns about the amount of pour-in-place that was there, and was suggested artificial turf around the outside. So we've kind of limited the cost in the pour-in-place and added some other elements to this playground. This slide shows the treehouse or play structure from different vantage points. This is for two to five play. We had tried to make it as inclusive as we can and include all age groups as possible within a small footprint. This image shows the crab trap and the surfboard in the lower left-hand corner. Being involved now in several playground designs, a key term that is commonly used throughout this process that I hear is play value. We understand how much space is required for swings and other components that are staple of most playgrounds, but the other equipment, how much play is available per piece of equipment, is what separates a good playground from a great one. All the equipment has many opportunities for play and imagination, but this crab trap was the piece that I think set everybody over the top on the advisory group, and watching the videos of it, of how much play and imagination could be used, this was just, we all started with the ship as being the number one, and then this came around, and it was like, this is pretty cool. So I think everybody's really going to enjoy this. This is again some more of the equipment, the we-go-round, the seesaw, and the swings. And then we had chosen a color palette to have them work with the designer and the manufacturer, and the color samples that have the check mark on them depicts what was selected and provided to the company. We also mentioned the field as part of a unfunded project right now through CPC. This is showing what we have fit into the new plan. As mentioned earlier, this is not a regulation-sized field. The field is currently used by Junior Cape League, Barnstable Little League for Practices, and Overflow Games. The field is also used for small pickup games, a wiffle ball, softball, baseball, and other recreational activities, Fourth of July festivities, and Recreation's Leisure Program. This field was included in the Comprehensive Field Study, and at that time, a grass multi-use field was recommended. We are awaiting funding from CPA, and we will make the recommendation to have this field included, as was recommended by the outreach that was performed. After conducting our public informational sessions and countless requests from residents to maintain this baseball field, we did include that in the design. It does have a shortened outfield of 150 feet, and we will re-level off the playing surfaces, install a new backstop, and appropriate netting typically used at all of our new baseball This slide shows an estimated and an anticipated project's schedule. We are planning, like I said earlier in the presentation, to start in the fall of this year, and completion at some point in 2025 for the two projects, meaning the playground and the parking lot. Just for note, for clarification, first project, $816,376 was approved in fiscal year 2022 for the playground, and additionally, $827,376 was approved for the parking lot and access improvements. And we are currently seeking funding for the field estimated at $468,000. And I just received this before the presentation, because Richard Ventrone has been working diligently to try to get a 3D rendering, and this is from today, and what it will look like down at the location. And that concludes my update for the Centerville Playground Project.